Ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the school board meeting this evening. We're happy to have you all here. I'm calling this meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Jordan, would you lead us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item this evening is the approval of the agenda. I have no changes. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agendas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Name. Motion is carried. Recognitions. Randy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have several tonight. First of all, I'd just like to recognize the Mallow staff. We had a very successful camp, including Trustee Riesland. And, you know, they all just work really well together and it makes the whole thing fun and stress-free. So I appreciate that. Also, Baumgarts donated 20 dozen worms, so recognize them for that. Doggy Theater donates and delivers the popcorn that we have for our Stumpy story. And then Pinnacle Bank donated and then came up and cooked hot dogs for our very last lunch that day. So we appreciate that. I'd also like to recognize both the Lodge and Jim and Karen Hutchinson. They have delivered treats to the school several times over the last couple of months for staff and it's really appreciated, so. And then this last week, the Fire Department and the Forest Service came for Fire Protection Week and brought Smokey and the dog Sparky and saw the kids. They got called out for a fire call, but still it was fun to have them there and we appreciated that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. But, oh, Bryce. I thought Tyler Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to recognize our FFA chapter. They've been pretty busy lately. Today, they're at the Manor and they played some bingo with some of the residents there. Friday, they held Ag Day for the 4th grade over at the fairgrounds. And then they completed their veterans clothing drive. I'm not sure how many bags of clothing they had, but it was stacked quite, quite deep in the hallway of the Ag building, so it was pretty cool to see the support they got for that. And then wanted to recognize the football team. Several of them last week went and read to different grade levels at the elementary school. And so I think it's just cool to make that connection with the younger students. And then I just, Mr. Riesland, I believe in 1997, was my Mallow group leader. So he's been at it for a while. I remember finding the group leaders with the Ziploc bags and we had to like smell some kind of scent.
Thank you.
May I?
Tyler, please.
Thank you. Green. I have a few as well. I would recognize Lori Crawford, and I'll actually describe a little bit more of it maybe later with you guys, but Family Math Night, Monday night, was a huge success. She also had a lot of help from Jen Stevenson and Jody McCormick, so I'd give them some appreciation. And we had donors that helped out with that too, and that would be Deckers, Baumgarts, Isabelle's, and Chick Financial that all kind of helped out with some door prizes and different things. I would give a shout out to Maddie Holden, who's a para in our building and has just stepped up in a variety of roles just recently. Just a lot of different things that have sprang up and she's really stepped up and it's really been a big help. I would tell you, Mike Peterson, if you don't know Mike Peterson with the Tech Department, he's also a former para professional for us. And he's wearing both hats right now for us, but he's kind of taken the middle schooler under his wing. And it's really cool to see because he's given a kid a sense of belonging and a sense of purpose. And it's going above and beyond the actual job description, so I would give Mike some kudos. I have to give kudos, we all do, to Sonya Tisdale because I saw all the work she put into the subclass that she's been running. And she's just really taken that over and doing a lot of that work for us, and so I really appreciate Sonya. And last but not least, Mrs. Davidson in the graphics and vinyl shop, I would just tell you, I'm repping some merch from there. Reasonably priced, good quality, and I think I got my order in 15 minutes. I can't promise that kind of turnaround. But with Homecoming coming up next week, I would just maybe encourage you guys to check that out because the students there are doing some cool stuff. And that's it, I think.
Thank you. Any other recognitions?
Haley. So I only have one, but I'd like to recognize the National Honor Society chapter at the school. They're currently doing their community service project is offering tutoring sessions during our ER time. So they're doing that twice a week, so I'd just like to recognize them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just echo what Tyler said about Homecoming merchandise, but they're also doing pink stuff. I think I sent you guys that in an email too, so they're supporting pink this month. I do have one shout out for Cody Nelson, representing Tech at the elementary. He took all of our IEPs off of Power School and uploaded them into a Teams folder for teachers to just super easy access, accommodation trackers and need to know sheets. And so it's, I, it was a huge undertaking and I didn't ask or anything. And now teachers, I mean, literally have IEPs and stuff, right? I mean, really, really easy. And so huge shout out to Cody for doing that for his team down there.
Yes. Sure. Anyone else before me? Okay, my, my first recognition is to the Western County Cowboys for providing the lunch for all the volunteers for Ag Day. I was out there and Ag Day looked really fun and the kids were having a great time. They got to actually, a search and rescue had, had set up a bunch of lines so they could put someone in a basket and haul them up a tree and then let them back down. And they were, they were loving all that kind of stuff. So a lot of people from the community showed up. That was awesome. All right. This is from the Wyoming High School Activities Association. And as per the recommendation from game officials, Chad Whitworth, the Associate Commissioner, sent this. "I am pleased to present Haley Beestrom, the Enclosed Wyoming High School Activities Association Good Sportsmanship Award for her exemplary conduct and good sportsmanship shown during the swim contest held September 21st, 2024. Sportsmanship is a goal that all our coaches and athletes should have as they participate in activities. And I'm pleased to hear that your students and coaches understand the true meaning of participation. Please extend my appreciation and congratulations to Haley." Congratulations, Haley. We also have a good sportsmanship report for the girls' swim team in the contest between Douglas Buffalo and Newcastle. And the individual recommended for that award is Ally Lenstra, who went out of her way to make a point to congratulate all her fellow swimmers. And girls' swim team, Newcastle versus South, Buffalo and Douglas. Individuals recommended for being overall great role models, Haley Beestrom, Newcastle. And for those of you who don't know, we have Haley right here. She's where she belongs. All right, any other recognitions tonight? All right, we're going to move on to visitors' comments. And we're proud to welcome, on behalf of the Wyoming State Historical Society, Dr. Mike Jordan and Tierney Parish.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come speak with my fellow member of the Western County Historical Society, Tierney Parish. First of all, I would like to thank your chairperson for asking me to lead in the pledge of allegiance. And I would like to also pick on Mr. Riesland a little bit because he was in school when I was in school in 1971 to 72. And at that, during that whole year, I got to lead the pledge of allegiance each morning from the principal's office. So it was quite, quite an honor. I do remember that from those days, so. I'm sure you remember that, don't you, John? Well, Tierney and I come to you as members of the Western County Historical Society. And we, as a society, look for outstanding projects in Wyoming history. And particularly, our focus is on the 4th grade history program. The reason that we do that is so that if we recognize outstanding projects, we like to nominate them to an awards program with the Wyoming State Historical Society. And Western County has been very active in the process of nomination. The students who do these projects don't initiate them because they're applying for an award. They do them because their teachers expect them to put a project together. And so these projects are, some of them are dioramas, some of them are research papers. And, and so Tierney and I, this last year, had the opportunity to review all the projects that were done. And we reviewed the Hall exhibit in the fall and then the Hall exhibit in the spring. And through that process, we nominated students for awards. The Wyoming State Historical Society had their annual meeting one month ago. And so those students that won awards were invited to come to the awards banquet. And some of them did and some of them could not come. And so this opportunity is to let you know about the students who won awards and then also to distribute the three certificates and the checks, the money that goes with these awards. And I think in the past, Mr. LaCroix has taken those and guaranteed that they will get to the right person. I think that's correct, isn't that? These aren't going to match that retirement account, yes. So just wanted to also tell you that in the previous year, we had award winners from Newcastle. And they, some of them went to Cody, Wyoming to receive their awards at the awards banquet in Cody. And this year, we featured those three students on our, on the booklet that we presented for our annual meeting instruction booklet. So we're very proud of your students and we're proud of the teachers that have made that possible. So in the young historian category, grades three to five, basically, these are the 4th grade students. Taylor Tystad won first place for her two papers, one called "The Medicine Wheel" and the other one was a paper on Frank Finkel. The second place winner, and these are on the State Historical Society Awards Program, the second place winner was to Robert Rogers. And he had written a paper entitled "George Big Nose Parrot." And so this is the, his certificate. He wasn't able to come. And in, also in the young historian category, third place went to Liam Gregory. And he had written a paper on Fort Fetterman. And he wasn't able to attend our award banquet, so I'm presenting that to you also. I think the monetary awards are like $75 for first place, $50 for second place, and I think $35 for third place. There is another category that is called junior activities. And grades three through five, Kinley Redding won first place for her project called "The Wagon Box Fight." Second place went to Cade Wilson for his project called "Buffalo Jump." And he wasn't able to pick up his certificate and check. And third, let's see. Third place in the junior activities category was, was awarded to Mindy Woolsey and the Upton 4th grade class for her project on Native American tribes. And so we, we visited up in Upton earlier this evening. And I don't, don't know if you have responsibility over homeschool program within the area, but the homeschool program has a wonderful Wyoming history education process too. And they have an open house at the end of the year. And we were able to attend that and we nominated three people for awards in that, in that area. And let me see if I can find that. So in third place in, in the junior activities, grades six through eight, went to Dominic Langto for his project on Cambria. Second place went to Nathan Smith, also from Newcastle, for his project entitled "Buffalo Bill Dam." And then in the young historian category, grades six through eight, third place was awarded to Shelby Smith from Newcastle for her research paper on Wyoming's paintbrush. And so I come to you just to tell you that we appreciate the participation of the students. We appreciate the participation of the teachers. And we're always welcomed to come in and, and see the works that the students are doing. And we value that very much. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a lot of awards for our group, so congratulations to everyone. Next up, we have JD Williams. Welcome. JD is the primary winner for House District Two for the legislature.
Thanks for having me and thanks for your service to Western County. I'm here to speak briefly about gun-free zones. Some of you'd be familiar, all of you would be familiar with the multiple bills over the years that have addressed this issue in Wyoming. And in particular, House Bill 125, from the last session, budget session in 2024, brought by Representative Harrelson, passed the legislature and was vetoed by the governor. And I've been in contact with Representative Harrelson. He will bring that bill again. And it will pass again, in my opinion. And in the event the governor vetoes it again, this legislature, I'm confident, has the votes to override that veto. And so I believe that any policy that affects Western County schools is better if it comes from here than if it comes from Cheyenne. And so that's why I'm here. I'd just like to open a line of communication between yourself and myself to where I can better represent you in Cheyenne. And Representative Harrelson is not averse to amendment, but he is very committed to this bill and he will bring it back until it passes or he passes, whichever comes first. And that's where we're at. And that's a conversation we're having with all across the state. And it's coming. It's a very, very broad bill. It applies to public buildings of all types, facilities. If you're behind a metal detector with armed security, you're exempt or they're willing to have an amendment for an exemption or a carve-out.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
If you're behind a metal detector with armed security, you're exempt or they're willing to have an amendment for an exemption or a carve-out. But I would say the same legislature that is willing to give that leeway will resist any additional funding for security. Contact me. Smarten me up. I'd like to make it as palatable as I can for our local school districts. And I think the best, the best input come from this room regarding, regarding Western County. Thank you.
So JD, can I ask you about what is your position on funding school resource officers? And do you think that's a possibility?
Well, that's a possibility. But I, I've, you know, that's a possibility if we're, if we're having the conversation here. But when it comes right down to it, in, I think it's not a possibility. I do not believe that there will be support for it in the legislature in 2025. I could be wrong. And I'll stand corrected. But I, I've, I've not had that conversation. That's just my opinion.
Yep, we, sadly, we are getting more used to unfunded mandates. We don't like them and we don't like the chipping away of local control. And there are people in the legislature who don't want the feds telling them what to do, but they want to be able to tell us what to do. And that doesn't sit really well with us because we think the closer we are to the situation, the, the better decisions we can make as well.
I will have much more success making the case for local control if I can reference school districts in House District Two that are doing something about this issue or any, you know, in, any issue on any, in any arena. But I believe, and I believe this is, is true, Representative Harrelson and co-sponsors of that bill believe they're, they're bringing this bill because of lack of action from local school boards on this issue that they would, that they would like to see. And so.
So they want control?
I wouldn't. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put words in their mouth or suggest that. But if there's a school district that has a policy in place, they're in a better position than one that doesn't, in my opinion.
So what I'm hearing you say is, for example, if, if 24 of the 48 districts had a policy in place, do you think that will make a difference? Or is it going to have to be a lot more than that?
I believe there would be a great case for an amendment that gives precedent to those districts that have proactively addressed this issue.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions? John?
JD. So this concealed weapons carry, that, that includes all government buildings and everything? This, this bill that's going to be brought up? I mean, does that include, like, district court? Does that include?
So if we're on the backside of a metal detector and there's an armed guard there, it does not include that.
So you have to have a metal detector and an armed guard in order to stop somebody with a concealed weapon from coming in there?
It's my understanding of the intent of the legislation. That, my conversation with Representative Harrelson, we had that, that conversation.
So in order for us to be able to stop somebody with a concealed weapon in our school district, we would have to have a metal detector and a school resource officer, correct?
That's my understanding.
But the state legislature will not probably fund either one of those?
That's my opinion.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
We're, I'm willing to have that conversation. I think that's a conversation we need to have in committee in Cheyenne. And as always, I believe committee's the best place for the legislature to get good information. And so no doubt, several of your associations will be there, but parents, community members. I appreciate, appreciate any of you weighing in.
What committee was that assigned to last time? Do you remember?
purely education, but good to be judiciary.
Okay.
I was not involved.
Right. And I don't remember either, but it probably was one of those two.
Madam Chair?
John.
So why did they want people with concealed weapons to come into our school district, into our buildings?
So the feeling is, and I, and I'm, I wouldn't disagree that many, that any, any gun-free zone is a soft target for a shooter. And so I, I believe that's the motivation. Their motivation is safety.
Anyone else have any questions? I have a question.
Oh, Jason.
Oh, Jason.
JD, does, so do you have to have your concealed carry according to this bill?
Yes, under House Bill 125, yes, you do.
Okay, thank you.
If you haven't read House Bill 125, I would. It's, it's, it's educational. It was educational for me to read it. There are a lot of amendments. They've done a lot of work on it. I'm not, I can't remember what it was like in '24 when Representative Harrelson brought that legislation. But please, it's probably old news to you, but please read it. And that way you can help, you can help me more accurately represent Western County School District.
And I have a question for you, Haley. Is, and Bryce, and Bryce. Is, is this something that you could pull the students and let us know how students feel about that, that we could share that as well?
You know, my initial thought on surveys goes with our parental rights policy that we passed. And so would we, this is survey. And so would we, this is surveying students' perception of safety and well-being. So would we have to get consent for, from all parents for students to take the survey? I mean, that's where my mind just goes right away. But I, I don't, I wouldn't be opposed to hearing what our student body thought regarding that. Cause I think their opinion matters.
Tyler.
Could ask staff as well.
Yes, that would be awesome.
It'd be good to hear.
So we'll, we'll figure out a way to get, we'll figure out a way to get a diverse set of responses.
I appreciate it. Contact me anytime. I'll give you my cell number, number real quick. If you pretend like you care. That's three oh seven, three, four, zero, six, zero, zero, six. And my email is jdlw1074@gmail.com. Appreciate hearing from you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, JD. We appreciate it. And I did not introduce Lisa. So welcome. I understand you guys put a lot of miles on today, so we really appreciate it.
I'm well appointed if you're. I do the video seventeen challenge, so you heard of it.
Thank you. All right. Any other visitors comments? Don't see any. All right. Action items, the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have no old business. Under new business, we have a classified recommendation.
Madam Chair, I would recommend to the board, um, Lawrence Egner as a custodian.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Lawrence Egner as a custodian. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Classified recommendation.
I also would recommend to the board Dave Taylor as a bus route driver. Make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Dave Taylor as a bus route driver. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number four, executive session under Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five I X to discuss a legal update. It's been moved and seconded to move into an executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. And gentlemen, welcome back to the school board meeting. Um, we are up to administrators' reports. Bo, would you like to start? Okay. Sorry for the difficulties you've had of late. You too, Adam? What would you like to report tonight?
I have nothing. I have.
I, I do have a quick question. So, um, we asked the youth football not to play their games, right? On the field, on the new field?
Yes.
Okay. But is middle school still getting to play their?
School per recommendations from strands. They said minimize use as little as we can for the year. So we'd come up with school activities. Um, we're fine. The youth football thing come to us or the flag football thing came to us. We gave them the option of going to the practice field, um, setting up leechers for them and seeing if Bo could paint a mini field form or whatever they needed. Um, I never heard back from them, so.
Okay. And it was my understanding they got to do that at the baseball field. So I think they were good. They were happy.
But that was reason, yeah, strands and with their recommendation saying use the field as little as we can.
That's what I thought. All right. Sean?
Chair, on the, on the sand, that quote they gave us, are we, uh, is that like a future thing?
Um, it's, yeah, it's something we probably get the, whatever it's called, the maintenance grounds grouped together and discuss it here within, they needed to know by the first of the year or so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Angie?
I don't have anything unless you have questions for me.
I seen, thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll keep it quick then. Um, we've just been working on state reports. So Marin and I have been working on the six eighty-four and that just makes Power School and our special education platform talk, and that's due on Monday. And then WD has their self-assessment, um, indicators that talk about out of district placement and file review. And so we're just trying to get those done before the deadline and we're just rolling through I E Ps already.
How many out of district placements do we have?
Two.
Just two. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Big, oh, yes, I know those are, cause the state board always had to approve the facilities if they, and yeah, those are incredibly expensive, I know.
Yes.
Brandy?
Brandy? All right. I'll be quick as well. Um, just a couple of things to keep you in the loop. I got word from the state on the Title One school wide reports. At the end of every year, I send you guys the big giant package for three, five and K two. And we don't have to do those every year now. We get to do them every three years. So don't expect one of those because I'm not going to do it for fun. So um, we're gearing up for conferences at the end of the month. And then I also wanted to give you a heads up, our children's choir started and they were invited to go sing the national anthem at a rush game, uh, November ninth. So I meant to send it to you before the meeting, but I'll send you the information. Um, you can get discounted tickets for, um, for that one so that you can come see them if you'd like. So.
Would you be able to do a social media post about that? So
Yeah.
more people could go and.
Yep, I sure can. We are not, um, providing transportation. Parents are going to take them and then they buy the tickets and stay in supervise. So it won't be the whole entire choir, but I was kind of waiting to see a number of how many, um, she got to sign up for it. So when I know that, I'll let you know and I'll definitely put that on there. All right. And then last one, um, our morning enrichment is starting on the twenty-eighth. So that would be our reading club and then our robotics and coding club. And we have a huge turnout for the robotics club this year. So we're kind of excited about that. So that's all I have unless you have questions.
I don't see any questions. Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got my mic on this time. Um, we have cross-country regional starting next week and then we host conference swimming here on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Uh, so if you want to see that event and see Haley and her team in action, um, the conference meet is the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Um, today juniors, all juniors took the ASVAB test and took that, um, online this year, which was something we haven't done before. Um, they've been pressing the online format and we, this is the first year that we've done it. Um, it's good and bad, I think, for, for the, the ease of getting scores back, but the, the ease of clicking really fast, I think, is also, you know, something that's scary with it. So I'm curious to see how some of our quick finishers did with it. Um, did have a lot of kids though that took it seriously and I felt like took a good amount of time on it. That was reasonable and, and fair. Um, and then senior A C T retakes were last year. Again, the state's been offering those, um, ever since the coronavirus has happened. Um, I haven't got word if they'll offer it again to the next year's senior class for a free retake in the fall. Um, but that's been completed. And then parent teacher conferences, as Brandy said, are the twenty-second and twenty-fourth. Um, twenty-second is usually the busier night in our building and I'd say Tyler's building as well. And so if you guys are. And then you have Haley's list for. It's, you talk with your hands.
Oh, did she give Haley's?
I have Haley's list for homecoming.
Okay.
Um, the school is getting a makeover this weekend. I was told to specifically use that word. Um, hallway decorations will be done by the classes from one to three P M.
The new store. This is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop, certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
The school is getting a makeover this weekend. I was told to specifically use that word. Um, hallway decorations will be done by the classes from one to three P M. And so they'll be, um, painting it up in orange and black as much as possible. And then they're trying to come up with a plan for repainting the Thorson N, um, up on top of the hill, uh, as student council or as a student body. And then they've, they've changed their powder puff and powder buff. Usually the officials, um, got bribed with candy and things like that to, to make very fair and just calls during the game. The bribes will be accepting our canned goods this year and then they'll be donating to those to those in need. So it's making a good thing out of a fun thing. And then, um, they're also doing a fundraiser or contest where they're going to tape a teacher to the wall. Um, students are, and any individual uh, could, uh, vote to, uh, tape a teacher to the wall. Whoever earns the most money or the most votes gets to be that winner. And so they have that set up. So just some fun things that student council is, is doing in our school.
And I, I know there was, there was a question about whether or not they were going to get to burn an N during homecoming and that the fire department had volunteered to help them do that.
If, if I could, I'll, I'm going to address two, well, three issues. Um, being that I have scars from the first one, I'll start there. Um, the first thing is, is the, the N up on the hill is on private property or you do have to go through private property. So I would ask, the other thing is, is it's not a hazing or initiation activity. And on the third, I was probably, I think the one, um, with the burn ban in place, I did not think it would be wise to do the N right now. Um, if moisture were to occur, I think that changes my decision. Um, but the biggest thing I have is if they were, we're going to use some of their staff to do this. And in the middle of that, we have a crisis and they were to be pulled away. And the what if happens, that comes back on us. Um, and I just don't think it was very respectful for, for the community in light of what's happened in our state right now, um, even last weekend where, um, as I'm talking to our volunteers, they're burned out. I mean, they're running ragged. Um, so I believe I might be the, the sole perpetrator for that decision. If, if the board would like to overturn that, um, I'm not going to pout. I just really do worry. Um, I worry about the perception and the safety of others, um, in a time where resources are short. And I think fire danger is as crazy as I've ever seen it.
Surely someone has a bunch of string lights or something we could put on them and.
So Madam Chair, several years ago, my suggestion was is to hook it up to propane. You know, to do like a propane kind of a controlled kind of a deal. So you don't have material flying around. Um, and no, I did not design it and no, I don't know how that would work. Um, but I'm sure somebody smarter than I could do that. And then it would be something you could use at any time. And I don't think it has near the risk. I mean, it'd be the difference between a charcoal grill and a, and a propane grill, in my opinion. But I just really do worry right now that, well, we're living on borrowed time and we lucked out last weekend.
Four in one day.
Yeah, and nine in, in our following state. Um, I just don't know how much longer we can be that lucky. So I would be the one to take that responsibility.
Okay, that's fine. I'm perfectly responsible. I'm.
Madam Chair.
I just had a question. Uh, Jason.
Do we not also, or in the past, we've also, and I don't, I missed a little bit of Rice talking, uh, authorizing, uh, the, to get meals for them?
Get meals for whom?
Parent teacher conference.
Yes.
So I, I don't, I can't remember if, if that's something we have to vote on or if it is, I would like to, I'd like to make the motion. Well, I made an executive decision for you, knowing that people were busy. Um, and I think because it has been very popular, um, and it does boost morale. Um, and we use both of those pretty well right now. I gave the building administrators the leeway to do that. And then I was just going to give you the bill. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Tyler.
So you just touch it once. Um, alluded to family math night. I'll try to keep it brief, but ninety-two, uh, attendees, students, siblings, uh, grownups involved. Um, Lori does a really nice job with it. She gives a handout, um, which is how to help your child with math without knowing math, um, because she appreciates that, that the parents aren't in class every day and everything else. So she just gives them conversation starters, tips as far as looking back at your notes or different questions that you can ask. So she does a really nice job with the handout, does a number talk, just like she does in class. There were games, there were prizes. I just, and, and I think like I told Brad, I think really the kids like her, so they bring people and, and come take part in it. So it's just a, it's a kudos to Lori and everyone that helped her. So just a little more info on that. Um, I'll, I won't talk about conferences. We're good there. Here, I'm going to get out of my wheelhouse a little bit. I'm not a transportation director, but I want this on your guys' radar. We've talked so much about bus driving and everything else. And I'm just telling you in my conversation with Troy this week, this Friday, October eleventh, it might not be a hypothetical anymore. It might be a real situation where somebody doesn't go somewhere because we can't figure it out. Um, and we're still working on solutions. Um, and we've got ideas and, you know, we all, what it seems like is we always come up with something in the last minute and it's always okay. Um, we don't even have that many activities going out. Um, I think part of the problem is what we've talked about before, where we're just, we have less and less regular drivers. God bless Dave Taylor, but I think this is the fourth time you guys have hired him in four years. Um, cause he keeps trying to get away and we keep talking him into it. Um, so thank you, Dave, and, and everyone that keeps doing it. But so I just, I really want, I mean, that's this Friday. Stuff may hit the fan. We're working on it. Um, but I wanted you guys to know in advance that it, it really is a, an actual real issue. And if you have questions, let me know. If you got real questions, maybe ask Troy. Um, but that's where we're at.
Thanks. Brad?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I'm just going to hit real quick. Um, you might want to set a timer because this is a rambling experience here, but House Bill 125, I know that, you know, several years ago, um, the board made a decision that that's not where we wanted to be. Um, in reading into maybe some sideline notes here or even the body language of our previous presenter, I don't think we're going to have the option to say no. I think the option is going to be what are the criteria that the local district would want to put in place for those that do? Um, and with that, I would tell you, the example that I continue to hear is it's okay for Brad to carry his gun, but by God, I don't want Tina to have hers. Um, that's a difficult conversation. Um, but I did see today, um, uh, W D E has made a press release about, um, a stance towards the legislative Capitol building. Um, that may have some bearings as well. Um, I would also tell you in different conversations with students, I really have not spoke to a single student that thinks it's a good idea for any kid to have it. Um, and I would say that's pretty universal, even with those that periodically we have to remind to take their hunting guns to grandpas or grandmas or aunt. that periodically we have to remind to take their hunting guns to grandpas or grandmas or aunts and uncles. And they're pretty good about it. Um, I would say some of the staff, very small portion of the staff would, would like to know if they could do that. I don't see a, a huge outcry of, of people wanting to do that. Um, again, in visiting with stakeholders, including staff and parents, you, you do get sort of a mixed message about it's okay if X has it, but they're really uncertain about, you know, what would we do? And I'm just putting this out there as an example. So in our criteria, it says Brad La Croix has to have his concealed carry permit. He has to present to the board that he has uh, official training. Um, he also is gonna do like a random uh, drug test similar to what we do with bus drivers. And then maybe one of those components is, you know, a psych eval. So what would you do with Brad if I'm not in good standing psychologically to carry a gun and I'm your superintendent? You know, that's a big question there. And I think as you think about those things or you visit with people, there's a lot of what ifs out there that are really difficult to reflect on. Um, and, and it's not that I'm trying to sway you one way or the other. But from what I continue to hear is it sounds like House Bill one twenty-five is going to survive. Um, J D did let us know that there's not, you know, there's not gonna be a veto in that way. So then.
Veto of.
Right. So where, where does that leave us as a local board? Um, I did, I think last week, have CLO send out the draft policy or the exhibit policy from the School Boards Association. That's the only one that I know that's out there. It can be modified and tweaked. I would also say that that really might be something that we would want to seek Allison's or some other legal uh, pieces about, because as I say, you know, maybe we wanna do like drug testing or psych eval. I don't even know if that's legal in this context. So I just think there's a lot of questions out there. Um, to not have those conversations is probably not wise. Um, and they're not a very popular conversation in all groups, just so you know.
And one of the things I think we really need to find out is what happens to our liability insurance? If we allow that?
So Madam Chair, I, I believe, not in writing, but I believe Zurich has unofficially said they're out. And that's one of our providers. However, at the same time, I believe when we went to the workshop in Gillette this fall, um, Brian Farmer did say that the school boards um, provider is, is going to back those schools. So it would be a jump for us.
Yeah, we would wanna know how.
You would wanna know.
The increases.
Well, and, and really what that increase covers and what it doesn't cover.
And, and I'm, I'm gonna add really quick that um, that today, that memo was that uh, uh, the state auditor and the state superintendent of public instruction uh, brought an amendment to the state building commission to propose a change to the draft rules that are open for comment. So anyone can go comment on those. Um, what they're, what the change they brought and was approved would allow for concealed carry of firearms by all citizens on state property regardless of whether they have a permit. So that got approved today, that they don't even need a permit. Um, in the school building commission rules. So I will share this memo with everybody I can get it to, so that you can get to the link to leave comments. Cause there's a forty day, forty-five day comment period on those rules, which is different than legislation coming forward. But I think it would behoove us to comment on those as well. So. John?
Just one question on, on this, assuming that it is gonna pass and it does pass. And, and people are carrying concealed weapons, even whether they have a permit or not into our school district, into our school buildings, how are we gonna monitor that? I mean, you're talking about having people that have training, that, that have the psyche valve and, and do the drug testing. How are we gonna monitor that? I mean, if I have a concealed weapon and I walk into a basketball game, how are you gonna know unless somebody sees it on me?
Well, I think the answer is, is I'm not. Um, however, there is technology that we, do we actually have the technology now? We don't, do we?
Everything we would have would be like the actual shot. You don't even fucking enough to hear the shot.
But my understanding is there is something that you can put in your software. And, and trust me, this is not my, the AI, thank you.
AI that says, you can put in there that says if we see a weapon.
Could you give him a microphone?
Um, so um, in, in, in the, in the conference I just went to, they were showing the new A I part of it. So you can put into your A I and they're doing A I notifications and say, um, if there's a weapon, notify me. Now, it is A I, cause I messed around and put man smoking. I found some dude smoking, but I also saw someone chewing on a pen. So, you know, it, it just assumes that's what it is. Um, so you could do something like that, but if it's concealed, you ain't, I don't know, you ain't gonna see it.
Correct.
I think the other concern comes up is, you know, let's say you do have that ability, you build a database. Who's gonna go up to the top of the bleachers and get the guy in the blue shirt that truly we think has one? And probably doesn't have the necessary criteria. The leadership team has deemed that it would be the superintendent. Um, because in our conversation, that's really the, the point is, you know, we are short of a school resource officer at every event, all day, every day. So who, who is gonna go have that conversation? Um, and maybe they do. They just say, jeez, you know, I forgot, I carry it all the time. I'll, I'll take it back home. I, I don't know. Um, but that's a good question. And it's, and it's a series of questions that I don't have answers to.
And we.
Madam Chair.
Asking.
When we do talk to our, when we do talk to our legislators, I think it's very important to ask them, what do we have to do to stop this other than a catastrophe in our school district? I mean, I, I realize that, that no school or no gun zones are, are soft spots. And I understand that. Um, but if we don't have a metal detector at every door and a person watching the metal detector at every door, of which I cannot walk through a metal detector because of my hip, it's gonna sound off. So now I'm wasting everybody's time behind me while they do the wand or I have to have some kind of I D to say that I have a bad hip or bad knee or shoulder or whatever, uh, or a plate in your arm, cause it was broke. I, I, I really see there's a lot of fallacy with this, with the legislators and, and I think what they're trying to do is really get away from uh, school resource officers and security. And putting guns in the, in the, in the public buildings. But maybe that's not what it's for. But I really think until something dramatically happens in our schools, and I do mean in Wyoming, and, and young people losing their lives or even the staff losing their lives, I guess they think it can't happen, even if, if they have a concealed weapons permit. I, I, I don't. I struggle with that.
And they have consistently for many, many years made sure they were protected from that. But our kids must not deserve the same protection. Tyler, you were next.
I just, I don't know, we're, we're shoving this, but I just need to think about it. You know, parent-teacher conferences are coming up. And I just want you to think about how a parent-teacher conference changes its tone in, in this certain situation. You understand what I'm saying? I might have some bad news to share with mom or dad. Do they got a gun on their hip while I'm sharing this bad news? There's a lot of what ifs. There's a lot of, I, I hear, but I just, things I'm thinking out loud for what it's worth.
And I would also like to know what, what is a general cost for magnetometers?
Well, and I'm sorry, Brad, that's what I wanted to say is there is really technology that will do it. We don't have it. And last I checked, it was expensive. And you'd have to almost decide where you want it, what doors you want it to cover too, because last I knew it only covered, I thought it was fifty feet as you come in. Yeah, at least the ones I saw. Now that, that's been at least a year ago and I, I would imagine they're pretty expensive and it doesn't sound like anybody's willing to give money for them.
Again, I respect him coming into the lion's den. Weston County is notoriously conservative. And J D came in and stood at the front of a room where he knew he was in the minority and took questions, which is better than I can say for others from, from that wing of the party. That's my, my problem. So, so you know, Chip not getting a chance to respond, hey, true no fault of our own or no fault of the Freedom Caucus, cause the Freedom Caucus shows up. They've kinda had the stage to themselves. But for J D Williams to do something that, that, sorry, that, you know, Ogden wouldn't do, um, you know, Liz Cheney wouldn't do. I mean, who he gets lumped in with. He came, he came right up and, and he saw people and he talked to people.
Yeah, at least the ones I saw. Now that, that's been at least a year ago and I, I would imagine they're pretty expensive and it doesn't sound like anybody's willing to give money for them.
Madam Chair.
Jason.
Sorry, Tina had her hand up. Go ahead, Tina.
Oh, sorry, Tina.
Um, so when he said that, um, that it would be better for us to have a policy in place, um, you know, what's he talking about there? Like, because I guess for me, we've always just been, no, that's not what we wanna do. Our policy is no. Um, and so what happens if we have a very specific policy that still says no? Um, and we can somehow get a, cause there's other schools that say no also. Um, so what happens if we all have a policy that says no, we're not gonna do that? I mean, I'm not saying they can't make us change it, cause they, they do that on the regular. But I'm just saying, I just feel like we need to not, not necessarily give up and start thinking about, well, what do we do when they tell us we have to? I mean, I feel like, what do we do to stop it? What do we do to, to create an environment that makes it very difficult for them to go against this many school districts and say, we think that you should let people in your school with a gun? I mean, am I thinking about that wrong or?
No, thank you.
What?
So, and, and I'm not, this is dangerous, but I think if I heard J D, I think that's where you would wanna use, you know, your student survey, your staff survey, your parent survey, and, and even your stakeholders in your community, because what he's asking for is, is what is, how does he represent us? Us is just not us in this room. And maybe that's where you say, you know, we have considered this. We've had some very, very difficult conversations around it. And X, Y, and Z are not in favor of this at all. I, I think is, that was sort of what I thought I heard. And that's just a shot at it.
I think that's it. That's a pretty good summary of, yeah.
Yeah, that was bad.
But I, I think that's what he was asking.
You know, what happens if the, what happens if the east side of the state is different or, you know, maybe it's about your response time. You know, it might be considerably different if your response time for law enforcement is forty-five minutes. That could have a big bearing. Um, or you have no response time. Um, I can tell you in the issues that we've had in the last five years, one of the things that I've been the most impressed with has been the response time. I mean, it doesn't take them long at all and they're, they're here. My other concern is, is how do you separate who should have a gun and who shouldn't if you're on the same team or am I the, am I coming to help or am I the, am I the bad guy? I don't know how you're gonna separate that out real quick. I would think that would be a very difficult decision for law enforcement as you come in.
Yeah. And they're trained for many weeks, not eight or sixteen hours.
Well, and, and the people that I've talked to, you know, let's face it, that, that could be your child. And I can tell you in my speaking, to my opinion and myself who thinks about this a lot, I've convinced myself I'm not gonna shoot a child. I'm not. I might get killed with that bad thought. But I would love to help. I don't think I can help that way. Cause if I made that mistake, that's, that's a big mistake. That's the ultimate, that's the ultimate error. So I think you do have to consider that when, you know, yeah, I have my concealed carry permit. Yeah, I like guns. I've done the training. Um, in most cases, that's still a school child. And it's, in this small of a community, you're gonna know them. Or you're gonna know somebody that knows them.
All right. Did you have anything else? Okay. Did you what? Did you, did you have something else, Jason?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna say, um, in next meeting reports, let's see, how, how do you want, how should we move forward on that? Billy?
Um, just thinking out loud here, is that something we can throw together and maybe at parent-teacher conference, just kinda talk to the parents about it? I mean, would that be a good time to kinda?
And this is really a bad notice idea, but you know, in the past, we've had pretty good luck if, if one more night of your lives. And I apologize for that, but maybe if you did just have a table, um, whether it be a survey or verbal, um, we don't know what is on your mind towards this topic. I think everyone is pretty aware of the topic. Um, and really they might be more apt to share their beliefs that way than waiting for a survey. I mean, you're right there. And yes, I apologize. That's not fair to your family time and it's one more meeting a month. But we've had pretty good luck with people liking that kind of delivery.
I think most of us were probably planning on attending some parent-teacher conferences anyway. Tyler?
If I may, I mean, if you guys really make that your plan, obviously if you guys get us something, all the principals send out their newsletters, you know, we can put right in there. There's gonna be board members here this night. They wanna hear your thoughts on this, that, or the other. So if you guys get that information to us, we can help get the word out.
Thanks. I'm writing myself a note.
I think it would be important to do some sort of a survey as well, because, I mean, I think it's nice to put some actual numbers, you know, I mean, I think legislators like data. Um, and so I think we can, I, we can certainly talk to people about it and get some, some really good information that way too. But I feel like if we don't have data to back that, then we're talking in generalities.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, we, we can make just like a little questionnaire type thing too and have them, you know, hey, we take five minutes. We did it with the four days school week, I think, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Just have two or three, two or three questions and just say, hey, you mind filling this out? You can either give it to me now or just send it back or something.
And maybe we could have a link for people to get to it. All right. That sounds great. Any board reports? Here's me. Jason, have you had a meeting?
No, we have not yet.
Okay. Um, Webb is going to have a. WEP is going to have a work session. We have our conference in San Diego, November ninth that week, and then we'll have a work session in early December to go over the first half of the planner's data. So it will be easier to absorb all that as we go and and move forward to all of our decisions and discussions. All right, future agenda items. Early start on the thirtieth? Are we thinking five thirty? Five? And are you sending out a valuation? Okay. Yeah, if it could. Do you think you'll have it done, your part done before then? If a week early, if you do it on that Wednesday, that just gives everybody a little more time to, because weekends are busy. All right, thank you for that. Are we saying five o'clock then? Five? Five PM, early start, October thirtieth. All right, then just, just. Oh, yes, we do. Thank you.
I moved to advertise for an early start board meeting at five o'clock on Wednesday, October thirtieth.
It's been moved and seconded to have an early start for superintendent evaluation on October thirtieth at five PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed name, motion carried. All right, discussion items.
Madam Chair.
Billy?
Just so everyone knows, we did get a ride for that beef that Sean donated for Elaine Vickers.
Oh.
And first week in November, we will have seven beef going to Buffalo. And they're thinking probably end of November, first of December, they'll be ready. So we might have to look at storage. Okay.
And then moving forward with lunch program, since we have a lot of things going on for the thirtieth, do you think it would be wise to invite some folks to join us from one of the districts that has moved away from the federal lunch program on the first meeting, at the first meeting in November? And kind of tell us their experience? That would be the thirteenth. And I'll be in San Diego. So you'll be up, Jason.
What date was that?
The thirteenth of November.
Okay.
And Billy, would you reach out to them? Yep.
Like I said, you just let me know and I can get ahold of Casey and all of them to
Okay.
See how they, you guys, just give me the, give me the thumbs up.
You and Billy will collaborate on that. That'd be awesome. So we'll have that discussion on November thirteenth. I reached out to Commerce County to ask them about, they have a, they have a CDL program where that eighteen year olds can get. And so then they can actually drive a bus in state. So I'm waiting to hear back some more information on that, just to share and see what we might be able to do there too, especially maybe not for this year, but going forward. See if we could do that. So I will let you know more on that when I know. Then I think one of the, one of the sets of policies we should probably look at is the flex time in remote work. And kind of see who quali, what, what groups qualify for that and what don't. And how people apply for that. And I know we flexed the office during this summer, right? But you. Oh, right. So I think, I think it would be wise to make that make that clear by policy. So everybody knows where they stand and if they can qualify to ask for flex. And then also about working remotely. I think that should be clarified for everybody. And then going forward, when it's, when we're looking at payroll and stuff, it's, it's my understanding that not all of our directors' insurance is paid for. So I'd like us to look at that going forward. I think when you've reached the level of directing a department in that we can look at paying people's insurance. So I, that's for the next budgeting session, but I think I would like us to look at that and see what we can do with that. And that's everything, yes.
Just so everybody's in the right direction. One of the things that we've been working on since the beginning of the school year is I think all those ideas are good ideas. The problem is, is we can't afford it all. I am really, really worried with our student numbers, with our funding, with the increases of other things to get us to where we need to be. I'm afraid what we need to do is have a plan. No one likes this, I get it. But you almost have to do addition by subtraction. Because you're going to have to create that money within the monies that you have now. Because even if you were to receive ECA money, that sounds great. But we're still in deficit spending because our student numbers are low. We had a hidden insurance. We had an error in the funding model. And so I think really we need to sit down and really prioritize that with the business manager because I'm afraid that we're going to, we're going to get ourselves in trouble if we don't. And I hope I'm wrong, I really do. But I will tell you that when you're looking at the possibility of now two kindergarten classes in the thirties, that's not a good sign. And
Well, and, and I will say that, one of the reasons I wanted us to start talking about some of those things now is because I think it's going to take a lot more work to budget this year.
Well, I would, I would also entertain this. I think it would be just a great retreat topic. You know, because there is a lot of what ifs. And it affects people and people are programs. And everybody wants it the way that they used to have it. But remember, you know, thirty two years ago, we were twelve hundred students. We're not there today. And I think for us to get where we want to be for staff and still take care of children is we're going to have to look at things considerably different. And they've been working on it. They've had a homework assignment now for, for almost two months. And it is, it's just one of those things to help Angie plan ahead and for us to take care of those things and try to maintain the programs that we have. It's going to take some thinking. It's not an easy trail out. And really, you really should start, eventually your plan's going to have to be for classes of thirties. I'm not saying it has to be today, but that's where your long-term thinking needs to be.
Thank you. All right. And one more thing, I was just going to remind everyone that Delta Kappa Gamma and the Newcastle Education Association are sponsoring a school board candidates forum on Tuesday, October twenty ninth, six thirty to eight thirty at the Newcastle High Lauder try. So everybody come and bring questions. All right. Does anyone have anything else to come to before the board? If not, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
All right, we'll call the Eastern Weston County Recreation Board to order. You have an agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve agenda?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Agenda's passed. Is there any recognitions on the recreation board? Seeing none, we'll move on to visitors' comments and special programs. Seeing none, you have an action items consent agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to?
Approve? Second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda's passed. I see no old business or new business. I have nothing for your information unless somebody else does. Seeing none, is there any discussion items? Seeing none, meeting.